To that statement from the state was that the viscoines, as was mentioned, but no residential facilities could be provided on the first floor. It could be on the second floor, but not the first. And so it had to be all commercial-type activities on the first floor.
And a couple of things, I just want to set the record straight. I think three million, for one thing, was relative to West Street. Is that right, Sally?
Sanco.
Sanco.
Sanco, yeah.
Sanco Drive. But either way, I think everybody will agree with this. Those estimates and that letter from CDOT came down as a result of what we thought was going to be the swimming pool, bowling alley, and the light. And so my point is, I think, and I hope everyone agrees, we need to sit down with CDOT at some point. Because if we're going to use that, a lot of people like the idea right now of open space. I can imagine that that number will be reduced dramatically, possibly. I don't know what CDOT will look for if that's open space. If we're going to have to put four million dollar infrastructure in there for open space to use that, then it's probably not going to make sense to any of us. And so I don't know what that'll look like going forward. But it seems to me like a meeting with CDOT might make some sense. And if we do this, how much is it going to, what do we need in infrastructure? If we do this, what do we need in infrastructure? That'll help us moving forward. Would you all agree with us?
Yes.
No? No one else?
Because it is open space right now and there's no infrastructure. To maintain it as open space requires no infrastructure. If we were to develop it in a manner that will cause increased traffic into and out of property, then we may have to provide some infrastructure. But right now, when we, when you talk open space, it is open space. The headwaters of Fountain Creek are there. Saddle Club is not built out, and it is existent. And that's part of the appeal to an open space approach to property, is it doesn't require additional infrastructure. So it would be minimal, absolutely minimal. But this contract does not allow for it. It's a development contract. It requires the DDA. It says that we agree to construct the improvements or cause them to be constructed. But those improvements are three million dollars. We don't have that money. We're in no place to agree that we will construct them. And to cause them to be constructed is us agreeing that we will cause private dollars to be invested in them. But we can't make that commitment on behalf of private citizens. We're in no place to honor that kind of agreement. But at the time, there was reason to believe the DDA could, because a plan was in place with people and with money and lots of interest. That is long gone. And there are so many known, quantifiable known facts that we didn't have at the time about the obstacles and barriers to developing this property, such as the cost of the infrastructure, that we have every reason to believe this property will not see any real development for many, many years. So it appears, appears to me, and it would seem the board has agreed for the most part, if we're to continue with these development obligations, we're going to continue to be seen as a failure, setting ourselves up to fail. And we need to, we need to, we need to set ourselves up for success. What can we? We can be, we can clean up this.
Mr. Mayor, go ahead, Bob.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I see the mayor's point of view here in that it might be of some value to have some different, you know, quick spreadsheet that shows this plan has zero cost. This plan has three million. This plan has four or five million. Quick and dirty estimates on those things. Talking to CDOT for other issues. I, myself, would like more data on, on those costs. So I, I see some value in gathering that information together myself.
Well, Tanner said we probably won't develop for a while. But at some point, when we develop, if I'm a developer and he comes to me and say, "We're marketing this land," I need to know what that infrastructure cost is going to be at some point. And all I'm saying is it's changed from the time CDOT looked at it nine years ago to what it might be today. So I agree with you that if we keep it open space and you have no intention, which it sounds like, of marketing that property, then we don't have to worry about the infrastructure cost. But at some point, we have to consider that. Don't you agree?
Mr. Mayor, can we ask the city planner to tell us how, because if that, if the developer comes in, she developed that land, let's say it's in or out of the DDA district, and they want to make a, a development there. Typically, the developer will be the one to install the infrastructure and the improvements. Then they deed that, they turn that over to the city to give them the ownership to that. And it, it would be my impression that the, the value of it being in the district is that they would be, have an opportunity, similar to what the dinosaur resource did, Synder did, to have some sort of reimbursement agreement from the DDA to help reimburse them for a portion of those costs. And so that's where that attractiveness and incentive comes in for it being in the district, is that outside the district, they would be responsible for those costs on raw land. And then they would have to turn those over to the city. In the DDA, they have an opportunity there to recoup some of those costs, because the district has that flexibility that the city does not have to help make them a little more whole in getting off the ground with a development.
Good, my hand raised. Bob?
Yeah.
Would you grab the microphone, please, Bob?
Thank you. A couple of points. When I, when I was on council, a lot of this was discussed. I, one of the issues I had real problems with, my current lane at Sheridan, where People's Bank is, okay, and we're a community bank now. And I was told, I believe, by Sally, that the agreement with CDOT, by putting that lane is, is they weren't going to require us to put any additional improvements leading into that Saddle Club where the DDA property are done. So if you're estimating millions of dollars in improvements, we need to make sure that that agreement stands. It could be no cost for CDOT for making improvements and to turn it into that area. The other one, as far as the plume is concerned, yes, a number of years ago, well, I was the director of environment for the Navy. And I was responsible for cleaning up all our bases, contamination of all sorts. And of course, with benzene being a big one. We have a lot of fuel storage tanks. And a few years ago, they required all fuel tanks be double hold, a steel tank and underneath a concrete tank. So all the gas stations had to come in and redo their, their, where they store fuel. Some didn't and went out of business. Now, what happens is you'll empty those tanks of any fuel when you, when you close it down. So there's no additional leakage coming. And so you've got that source, you've got a pathway, and then you've got receptors. And what you want to do is prevent that hazardous material coming from a source, going to a receptor, which would be streams, you know, that sort of work. And so our solution was you do pump and treat. And I think we're doing that beyond the gas station right now. There's that, that building on, on the other side of the, the station up, the gas station up here, near South Gold Hill. But whether or not any fuel still leaks down in the ground, you can still, you can do a sample, go down there into the plume and see if there's any contamination. But it sounds like that might have been resolved before with, with the Department of Environment. And they said, "Hey, there's nothing left there. It's all been, you know, it's all disappeared." So if, if that's true, that the Department of Environment is satisfied that it, there is no more threat of, you know, contamin, or on our health of people, then that, that's a cost that goes away. So those are, like, I'm reading two issues that it should be pretty simple to solve if we have agreements with CDOT and then Health, Department of Health and Department.
Oh, I don't want to get too much in the weeds.
Okay, but, but those are things that can reduce the cost of developing. That's like substantial.
Thank you. John?
When, when we were negotiating with, with Lot Two, CDOT, I believe, made a agreement with, with Sally and the planning department that one building could be put there as a test case. But if any more were put in, then the road Saddle Club way would have to be put through to West Street. Okay, the city, the city bought that land. The city owns the access, but from the bank, all the way out to West Street, from the edge of the property. So that is owned by the city. It has nothing to do with the DDA at this point. And when you, when the, when the city was looking at putting in the pool, there's such a slope and grade on that, on that piece of property, that that's where the two million plus dollars came from. So Lot Two cannot be improved unless CDOT has changed their mind until the traffic is stopped, come over to West Street and the right-hand turn lane added to get, to get on Twenty Fourth. So that's one issue, totally separate from, from the problem of water.
Thank you. How did you, Tanner?
Yeah, a thing that I kind of wanted to reflect on. I'm kind of getting the impression now, we as a group are trying to come up with a, a plan right now on what's going to happen. But the market is not ready for what's going to happen or what we would like it to happen. I am one of those, I guess, that is not particularly hot to trot to make that an open space. I want to see it a commercial area. With that in mind, and with, with that development, it might behoove us well to define where the risk factors are and then figure out how we can start to mitigate those. A risk factor that keeps coming up is Fountain Creek headwaters. A short time ago, I did a, a review and started looking at Fountain Creek. There in the Saddle Club property, it really is nothing more than a drainage ditch. The only time it flows is when it's draining rain or snow. You go downstream and basically get beyond Walmart, it's still dry. You go a little farther, then you start to see some water coming in from Silver Springs. Now, a headwaters, to me, of a stream is not a drainage ditch. It's where you've got a lot of flow of water. So maybe one of the things that would be very productive in the development of that property, to become a viable piece of property, is to work with whomever at the governmental levels to see if we cannot change that designation. That that might be a good expenditure of DDA funds to remove that particular risk factor. Once it's a drainage ditch, we can move it wherever we want it. And that would make it far more desirable. Because right now, where it is, as I understand it, Corps of Army engineers says it has to stay there. You can't do anything with it. Therefore, that's a huge problem. That's one issue. If we look at other things in that vicinity, how can we benefit or have caused improvements adjacent to that particular property that's going to fish a benefit and make that a more viable project for that whole region, not just the Saddle Club? So maybe we're, we're ahead of the card on this.
You bring up, you bring up, I mean, there's opportunities, I think, for the city and DDA to mitigate those risks together.
Yeah.
Yes.
There's separate funding streams that could, for the property itself, and road improvements and infrastructure that could reduce those risks if that were to be a decision the City Council would want to make.
Sure.
Okay.
And that, that brings value to that property.
And reduces the, the entry to the market to, to develop that property.
Absolutely. And that's very, very important to a developer, is to be able to remove a lot of those risk factors and actually remove some of the costs that are involved that are basically being turned over as public improvements.
I'm going to go Mary Jo, and then Jan, and then Tanner.
And with that, Mr. Mayor, I'm going to have to depart for another obligation.
Round of applause for Allison.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Go ahead, Mary Jo.
Well, I would like to just simplify this. We're waiting for the economy and the development of that property to, to come forward. It's not here yet. We all agree to that. It's market-based. We all agree to that. And right now, we're taking the obligation away from the DDA board because this contract says, "You will do it, and you will do it now, and you will." Well, the market isn't there yet. We just want that, we want that responsibility lifted so that it, once again, does not make us look like we are failing to do what was required of us. So that's really the purpose of this, to let the free market develop that. And I would like to see it become open space until that market happens. Everything we're talking about here, when the developer is ready, all this will be addressed at that time. And that's where the DDA can use TIP to help him out, which is within that district. But right now, it eliminates us with this obligation that we have to work on it and do it now. I'd like to see the hands of everybody in this room to think right now that that should be an open space until market comes along to develop it into something else.
Makes sense. And since we all agree, I think we should start working towards that end. And a big part of that, I think, could be, because I know DDA's struggling with resources and the city guys some, that there's a really a great place that we can partner with our resources and, you know, grow grass, do whatever. But we, next step probably should be, if we all agree, is what's that going to look like? What do you want to do there?
And, and let's, let's continue this conversation. Let's modify, let's get this agreement modified. Let's get this agreement that works for both bodies. And, and it's not going to happen, obviously, today. We have other things on our agenda. But this is very important, and this is very important to the DDA board. And, and this is, I think this is where they put their best foot forward to start this negotiation with the City Council.
We will.
And so.
We got an agreement with everybody in the room, basically.
So let's, let's keep this conversation going, and let's do it in a timely fashion, if I may, Mr. Mayor.
Well, if I can, I mean, I want to say that I think the original discussion was that, you know, we all agree that the market will determine the outcome of the development of this property. We're, we talked about including the community in providing input into the future of this property as well. As long as that property is both an element of the city and an element of the DDA and that there's still, there's still the ability for the City Council to leverage performance of some sort, whatever that might be. It might be something that's not necessarily what we see today on there. And I think that's why we extended the agreement, to come to an agreement on what that performance is. Then our city has the opportunity to come in and give input to DDA and to Woodland Station so that we can really realize what the city would, the city, the citizens, the residents of our community would like to see. Whether, and that, that's not just their, I mean, you're informed by what the market wants. You're informed by what, what the site selection committees of potential economic development opportunities are. There's a lot of things that would inform that, that process. But that's, we're, with 2020, we're looking at the, the comprehensive planning process. And I think there's an opportunity there for the, the citizens of our community to come in and give that input. If we eliminate the city's leverage in terms of reentry, where it's only the DDA that has a say in, in the future of that property, our citizens don't necessarily have a say anymore in, in that process. And we would eliminate, really, a citizen's input into the future development of that property. And so that would be my, one of my largest concerns. And our, we're not in a, we should, like I said, we gave it, we gave it three years, I think, to, to negotiate this, this process. Let's give it some time. Let's give our citizens the opportunity for input into the process so that they can, they can at least provide you some, some ideas on what maybe they would like to see.
Hold on, was Jan first?
Well, I don't want to repeat everything that was just said. But I do want to say that we are hearing from the community more and more that they want that open space there. And I think that we definitely need to give consideration to what they want. We want these people to come to our downtown, give them what they want. Maybe they don't want other buildings there right now. They want the open space. What we heard from the farmer's market yesterday was amazing. And I think that we need to listen to that. That's just my opinion.
Mary?
The, this is not, okay, the way the agreement is worded doesn't prevent the city from reentry. The city can, the city can repurchase.
Or twice as much as the current book value.
The amount, the taxpayers of the DDA's debt. The city made that decision long ago. You going to hang the DDA with that?
No, I'm just saying, it's, you realize it is twice as much as the book value of the current.
And we're already stopped paying it. You want it back and all the rest of the interest that come with it, then why don't you take on that debt?
Well, the other, well, the piece other is, is that the DDA is an appointed board. There's no political remedy if you decide to do something with the property that the citizens necessarily don't want to see the property developed, right? The city, by having the City Council still involved in the process, you allow at least some, you allow a political remedy of some sort if, if it's developed in a way that the community doesn't want.
The City Council maintains a liaison on the board. All of our meetings are competitive meetings, and oftentimes, the councils are present. If the council, city has any issue with any discussion or direction or decision that the board reaches, the city is free to comment and apply its, to give direction to the board at any point. To maintain the right to take the land back without any cost. Because you're not talking about it's worked out. It's, right now, it's without any cost to the city. It is a very different scenario. You're talking about the city having the, when, when I say city, I don't mean you and City Hall. You're the staff and the administration. So when I say city, I mean the taxpaying citizens within the city right now have the right to take from other taxpaying citizens the land they're paying for and go sell it and leave these guys paying who built.
Not necessarily.
Now, representing two different groups of taxpayers we represent, I would suggest that's a bad deal for us to put taxpayers into with each other. For taxpayers to be doing that kind of business with other taxpayers isn't fair and equitable.
It's not necessarily. You could refund the funds that come from the sale of the land directly to those within the district. It, it's a process that could be, could be achieved. So you're saying, but normally, yes, you're correct. But there are methods to be able to provide that revenue back to those who have paid.
So why not just put that in agreement? The city is going to pay that money back to those in the district.
I think that's part of the discussion on the future of the agreement. Because I think where the city.
Yeah, and I want us to all remember that we all live here. This is our town, all of us. We're representing everybody that lives in this town, whether you're in this taxpaying district or that, or over there, or over there, or up there. This is our town. This is where we live. We're going to represent the people that live here.
You have a table.
I have one more small comment. It's like saying that Woodland Park, we're Woodland Park. When we talk about things being in the county, I remind people Woodland Park is in the county. We talk about the DDA. DDA is in the city. And it is an asset going forward into perpetuity of the citizens of the city. And so that, that's a balancing piece that we have to keep in mind still. And the council is the elected official of the people in the city. And so we are here to protect the taxpayers' rights, the citizens of the city. And so we have to keep that balance in mind. It's not a, it's not selfish thing. It's, it's what we're charged to do, just like, and, and we've, that's all.
Thank you.
I just have to.
Two more. I'm going to go, I'm going to go with Val.
I can go over.
And then I'm going to go with Pete. And then we're going to vote for it, because we're going to go about another 20 minutes. Go ahead.
Real quickly, we, we talked about community interest. I was at the community input session last month or so. And it was unilaterally, almost universal by the community. There's about 200 citizens there about keeping that open space and doing green, green space type things in there. So we have a measure of the current philosophy of the community right now. The final report, I guess, is due pretty soon. But I was in the room, so I, I know exactly what happened. And there were a couple hundred people, citizens there. So we, so we do have a measure of the essence of the community. Thank you, Pete. You have a microphone back there?
Yeah, I got it, thank you. I'm going to be the null hypothesis here. And I'm probably going to get hung when I get out and talk a lot. But you know what? The citizens of Woodland Park are a bunch of hippies. And you will always hear, "We don't want more development. We want to keep open space." And quite frankly, if, if that's, if that's part of the solution, I understand, you know, this property is owned by the DDA right now. It was, it's being paid for by taxes collected by the DDA. And the DDA is responsible for development. And so, yeah, community develop, our community input is terrific. But I can tell you from personal experience what the, what the outcome will be. It'll be, "Don't build, don't develop, leave it alone." So if that's, if that's really the serious consideration, you guys are done. Pack it up, call the meeting to an end, and just leave it open space forever.
I'm not done. Thanks. We're going to move on in regards to, to this agreement, because we're not going to make a decision.
I just wanted it.
I'll give you both one minute.
Who was first?
I think Pete was first. I mean, I'm, go ahead, Kurt will be first.
I don't need a minute. The question, the question that the government officials are concerned with, it would seem to me, is to have continued extra control over the land. In our country, we have a, we have control for that. It's called the free market. And we have additional control called planning commissions and so on to prevent too bad of things to happen. My answer to the citizen who wants it to be something is fine. Comply with the zoning requirements and raise the capital and put your building in there if the planning commission will approve it. You don't need a bunch of government bureaucrats to micromanage development. That's how you got here in the first place, the city officials thinking that they were commercial developers trying to develop, contract the land. Insane. Thank you.
My previous comments were to minimize the risk and try to come up with better cost of making that developable property. Because eventually, I would prefer that it be developed according to the party. And the last issue had to be with the, the drainage. And in 2015, the previous administration changed the regulations which defined that drainage ditch as waters of the United States, which then, the Corps of Engineers had to give a permit. And it was going to cost over a million dollars to improve that drainage. First thing that the current administration did, within months of being in office, eliminated that regulation and went back to defining that as just a ditch. So, and, and you can go to the Corps of Engineers right now and see what they have to say. But that's one thing you can mitigate these risk guard.
Thank you. You're done, Bob?
Okay, good.
It's a minute. Thank you very much. We need to move on in the interest of time. Go ahead, Billy.
I was going to say, but in regards to this amendment with this contract, I, and my suggestion is that the DDA's attorney and our DCA attorney sit down together with the DDA board and council in an executive session, and we discuss the terms. Because these are all legal terms that none of us, our attorneys, should be discussing at the moment, because we don't understand the weight or the value of the wording. The DDA does in their benefit, but the city doesn't quite get in their benefit. Whatever the DDA would decide to do with the land from there, frankly, is the DDA's land. I'm not, I'm not supposed to sit here and dictate what someone can do with their land. That's not my job, and that's not my position. So if they want to sell it, they can sell it. If they want to put ponies on it, they can put ponies on it. It's up to the DDA, the Woodland Park, and then citizens that want to work with them. And that's just my stance, and that's my opinion about this amendment. I think we do need to consider it. We need to look at it so that they can go forward without the weight over their heads of us demanding infrastructure that is vaguely determined or defined. And that's where we need to go. And I just think that it's all theoretical until we at least sit with our attorney to understand better these terms.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll move on to two things that we just want to discuss. One is in terms of, and there's been some discussion about future TIP agreements. Would you like to start a talk in that regard? There's been some talk about no new future TIP agreements, yes, new future TIP agreements. What does the DDA board?
Well, I would, I would address that. And I think this is how most of the DDA board. Well, I would, I would address that, and I think this is how most of the DDA board, if not all, think about, about this. Each of our TIF agreements have been handled on a case by case, required, and we now have put in place a new form that they can fill out, whether they're eligible for a TIF agreement, if they have a legitimate plan, an offer, a business, and are within the DDA district, we encourage everyone to come, and if we can help, if it fits, that will be determined, be determined off of that information. Our TIF, we would like to see us use some of the funds that are going to come in available for the people that are already in the district, for improvements of their business. What we need to do for them is get people in their doors, if they're retail, for the service, get people to know that they're there. Is it a safe place? Do we bring new dollars to town? How do we promote it out? What is gonna be the best thing to do with that DDA money to service the entire DDA district, and especially the downtown retail, whether it's service or retail, especially them? We've done very little for them in the whole time. All we can talk about is Woodland Station. We have spent money beaucoup on that and have nothing to show for it. That needs to stop. And that is the focus of the DDA, and that's why we're here at this meeting today with council, to keep us moving forward in providing a safer and better community, whether that's with the TIF agreement, or whether that's with TIF funds to make safer spaces, to make a more beautiful community, to promote our community. We're the best kept secret along the front range. Does that answer that?
Yeah, absolutely. Do you have a comment in regards to, to TIF agreements and moving forward with TIF agreements?
Val? Yes, sir. I'd like that. It's okay. I think we need to go back to our, we definitely need to be looking at our charter and staying on the tips. I think what happened for a while is that people became, or they came under the impression that if I wanna come to Woodland Park and build something in the DDA district, I get a tip, end of story. Okay? And I remember Mr. Butterey repeating to me, and repeating to me during the end briefing, "But for the DDA."
Remember, we're not fooled by that.
I, I, I got that, but I think that was a very good point. "But for the DDA," that these developments happen, okay? That when we go into the future, we look for what is the, the functional developments, what the city wants. It's all, it's all about taxpayer, and everybody that lives here, and works here. So we need to really be looking at where the TIF monies go, how the TIF monies are expended, and how those TIF monies are obtained. And sometimes, it, it doesn't require a tip to get a developer to come, as we've seen.
Has it proved that?
Next question.
Well, last question.
Oh.
Just relative to DDA boundaries, because we're in a discussion, and again, we're not gonna make a decision tonight, but a little discussion in terms of, do we continue to expand DDA boundaries? Do we keep the boundaries where they are right now? Is it something relative to this conversation? What has the DDA spoke about in this regard? If you get a great offer that's out of the DDA, is it something that we're gonna consider? And how are we gonna move forward in that regard? It's on the agenda, we don't have to talk about it today, but I just wanted to bring it up, because it's on the agenda.
I would say, if I could please answer that question. At this time, there is no intent in expanding the DDA boundaries. There's no reason to change them. The future, again, it's all an individual application. It's how the next four or five workshops we have, what we work out, how we're gonna grow, how we're gonna develop, maybe at the last workshop, we need, we think we need to bring something in. Because that will be, again, be determined as we move forward with what we want Woodland Park to look like, and how we want to service our people that live here. So I would say, no at this point, to be determined if needed.
Number around the table that haven't had a comment, is anybody? Jerry?
Listen, I've always viewed that somebody's gotta pay fire, somebody's gotta pay ambulance, somebody, you know, and if we include the whole city, that skirts at, at all our meetings, we've got the fire and ambulance attending, looking out for their interest in all. And it's our obligation, responsibility to look out for their interest too. So I think that if we expand the boundaries to include everywhere, I don't think that's what we're set up for. That's just my opinion. I think that TIF should be doled out on a responsible approach, you know? Is it, is it gonna be an improvement for the city? Will it be the difference between them showing up or not? Is it redundant? Is it, is it? So there's a lot of factors, but I, my opinion, that, you know, the boundaries are defined, and I think we should keep on that one.
Appreciate it, thanks, Ruth.
If you don't mind, I just, there, I mean, there are other, there are other economic development tools that are out there. I came from a Title 31, same, same title that governs the Downtown Development Authority, that use a lot of different economic development tools, including public improvement districts to, that could be independently done without the city's involvement, without the DDA's involvement, to provide the infrastructure that touches and concerns these properties. There's been discussion about dropping the mill levy. Over time, as debt services paid off, and maybe TIF agreements are put into moratorium, that there's an opportunity to lower the mill levy commensurate with the reduction of the boundaries of the DDA. So that's a thought just to throw out there. Businesses, that 29% commercial asset rate, which is an impact, which is very impactful to our businesses, if we were to constrain the borders of the, of the DDA over time, as the mission slowly comes to an end, we could slowly decrease the mill levy and it provide relief to our businesses. That's just a thought.
See, and those are the kind of things that need to come out in our workshops. We need to have as clean a slate as we possibly care as we move forward, so together, we can talk about these things, and that's why we're here for you, you have new ideas and new information. And that's the kind of thing that we need to look for and work towards. And I'd like to say one more thing. While we're talking about this Woodland Station, the land that you acquired from VETRA, put the screen in at some point, I'd like council to talk about somehow, and I don't, we don't wanna buy it, we don't wanna, I mean, but we'd like to have you include that in what happens at Woodland Station if it's open space, so that it can be mowed and planted in, and upgraded and fitted in with the rest of the open space area. And of course, you're aware of that, so you would be in what that's gonna look like and how that will happen. But I'd like you to consider that, so that we don't have this spot right there with a big hole in it.
I agree. On the note of boundaries, I haven't heard from anybody, any desire to expand the boundaries. None whatsoever. I don't think there's any plan or desire to do so. That said, nobody knows what the future holds, and if something came up against all of us that won the support, overwhelmed the support, meaning the DDA would realize, by the majority, they weren't the appropriate tool to use, I wouldn't completely rule it out, but I'd say, for now, we cannot expect to see a little more vibrant experience. I think we skipped something. And it's city-DDA collaboration. And I wanted to hit on that just briefly, if I may. When I look at the DDA's foundation plan, I see a lot of low hanging fruit. I see things like, in general, "Make Woodland Park a better place for people, improving the downtown for the convenience and enjoyment of our community, promote the safety, prosperity, security, and general welfare of the district and its inhabitants, prevent deterioration of property values and structures within the district, prevent the growth of blighted areas, improve the overall appearance, condition, and function of the district, encourage pedestrian travel, preserve and create green spaces, parks, pedestrian walkways, et cetera." Foundation plan is full of these things. It says we're going to create a beautification plan. Some of these things, the DDA has never even tried to do. Some of these things we've tried to do, and we've tried to work with the city, and we together have struggled, we've stumbled, we, we haven't been toddlers. I'd like to use a couple of things as examples of where I see a lot of opportunity for city-DDA collaboration. Cleanliness. Cleanliness and maintenance of the downtown. That is one of our goals. That's something we should be working on. The city owns a street sweeper, and the city owns sidewalks sweepers, and the city owns pressure washing equipment. If we can work together, make it a priority to clean downtown, the city could be a partner. The city can help support the mission.
Sorry, there's some wind.
Wind, wind. We got beautification, we got beautification. We created a beautification plan in 2012. The DDA has it, the city reviewed it, the city liked it, the city said they were going to implement it, the city did not implement.
Please don't forget we're all on board.
So let's look forward.
Let's do it.
And let's get that plan out and dust it out.
Let's do it.
And let's review it together, because together, the city and the DDA collaborate. We can achieve that.
And I skipped that, because I thought we were all on board, that we are gonna work together. So are we, can we do this?
Yeah, absolutely. There's, there is, I mean, I, I know of some of the history behind that, and I know there's some, there's some obstacles, but there's some things in there that I know that we need to discuss and that the city can collaborate with the DDA on.
Awesome. That's awesome.
Thank you.
Well, that was a great conversation. Well, I saw Sidewalk Sweepers out the other day, and I ran up the street to go stop that guy and shake his hand and thank him profusely for what he was doing, because that does not make a difference. I just love. I thought it was very, I'm sorry. No, go ahead, Paul. I thought it was very nice how the city cleaned up just before a small shop.
Amen.
And that was wonderful to see, the streets being blown off and the sweeper going up the street, and I thought, oh, hey, amen, brother Ben, we're, we're working together. That's a minute. Val, I'm gonna give you the last word.
I, I, I agree with a statement Hillary mentioned, that we, one of the first things we ought to do is get the attorneys together, collaborate, executive session, whatever. I think it's important. She's said we're all, none of us are lawyers, she is, but I certainly know I'm not, and I think it's one of the first action items.
Appreciate you all being here. We will have more meetings, obviously, but I think we got a little bit of a start on some important issues, and at the end of the day, and I think we reached my goal in this regard, just know that the city's gonna do everything we can, and you can ask any of these council folks, not just me, we're gonna do anything we can to help along the way. And so that's not anything we wanna do, that's gonna be anything we can do, and so let's all keep this together. I know Noel hates the kumbaya, but, you know, lots to say for working together. So appreciate your time, and we'll be in touch on how we're gonna move forward.
Neil, I've got a question for you, and, okay, instant question. You, you took the strategy for this meeting and looking forward, to look forward and not turn up the past. I think that's a great idea, if you have us looking forward to plenty of things to do. There are a lot of citizens, however, who think that, gee, that's convenient, the people who wasted $7 million, who haven't produced anything, don't wanna talk about it. So what I'd like to know is, could you possibly set up a forum so that the people whose $7 million you guys wasted could ask questions about that and see where it went? And how are you gonna learn from the past and not, for example, get bogged down in commercial development? We just like to ask questions like that. Now, don't be negative, but it could be over here, not, not here, but just to be some accountability from all of you guys who wasted that money. That's all I'd like to hear. If you could set that up, and I don't want an answer, but I'd like to see what's happening. Thank you.
You know, I'm sure at one of our workshops, there will be some general public, and if that needs to be on the agenda for that general public moving forward question and answer, I don't know why we can't. Everything, it went to court, so that everybody would know. So that's, it's all out there. Somehow, we'll try to move forward.
Separate from this, but I as well, and say some, make sure, let's see some accountability, but given the scandal that's gone on over the last ten years surrounding this. Thank you. Thank you all for being here. Thank you.